Mr. Gates, do we have any public comments? Okay, thank you. Then we'll go right into our workshop, Ms. Robinson.
Before we go into the workshop, we'd like to take this moment to recognize the outgoing JCC members, and I would ask that the outgoing JCC members stand and be recognized. Just have... And I think Mr. Tyson, the new president of the JCC, has something to give Ms. Silverberg.
President Atman, members of the board, and Madam Chancellor, as the third JCC chair in the history of TCC, it is my honor and privilege to acknowledge the second JCC chair, Ms. Karen Silverberg. Karen is a professor and co-ordinator of the ABA-approved Paralegal Studies Department at the Northeast Campus. I can personally attest to the fact that she has served on the JCC with a spirit of excellence while also maintaining quality teaching and learning in the classroom. I might also add that she also excels in the roles of mother, wife, and youth leader. I consider Karen to be a mentor and an inspiration. It's going to be very, very hard to fill these great shoes. Accordingly, I present this plaque to you as a very, very small token of the great, great work you've done. May we have round applause for the great Ms. Karen Silverberg. Yes, indeed.
Do you have a few words for us, Karen?
I would like to acknowledge the fact that the outgoing Faculty Association presidents received certificates and had their work acknowledged at the most recent KELP meeting, and that I spoke there and spoke as to their commitment and the work that they had performed. I want to acknowledge before this board that nothing I was able to do would have been possible without the work of the other 10 members of our Joint Consultation Committee. It's been a pleasure and an honor to serve the faculty and to lead us forward into what I think is a greater spirit of cooperation and working together to lead this college in great... into an even greater future. But thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, as you all come up for your photo. Thank you, and all of your colleagues, for what we know is above and beyond, takes extra time and effort, and we appreciate it. Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Madam President, board members, first, I wanted to thank Nancy Chang and Finance for all the work they've put into this, especially Shelley Birch, who's responsible for these slides, and Tammy Tennis, who somehow kept everybody at bay for the last couple of days while I prepared for today or tonight. I want to give this board a roadmap of where we're going tonight and over the next few months, so that you don't think the train's going to leave the station tonight. First, you see tonight's agenda. This is the first board workshop that we're going to have, and tonight, I'm going to go through the assumptions, the data, the property and the programs, and questions and discussions. Under the property and programs, what I did was I looked, I reviewed all of the board budget workshops that Irma Johnson Hadley did from last year, and I built from those to see where we came from last year and the progress we made this year, and then took your comments from governance and other meetings and built from that. June 16th will be our workshop number two, which should be our planning and assessing stage. I'm going to ask for feedback at the end of this presentation, because the planning and assessing stage is where the KELP prepares requests, and I'll bring those prioritized requests back to the board. But what I'd really like tonight is your feedback, so that we're not working in a vacuum, trying to give you requests without any sort of feedback from you all upfront about what your expectations are from us. On August 4th, I'll bring a proposal for review, where we'll have boiled down our planning and assessing phase and have gotten feedback from you. On August 18th will be our fourth and hopefully our final workshop, and that'll be the proposal for adoption phase. So I'll take you through the assumptions first. The first assumption is the state appropriation, which will remain the same as the current year. Nineteen percent of our revenue is state appropriations. That's 56 million. This is the second year of the 84th Legislative Biennium, so we will keep the same amount, 56 million, as we had in the past year. State appropriations for 2016, 2017. If you will recall, in 2013, 2014, the state only paid 50% of the total cost of the matching retirement contribution previously paid... well, previously, they paid 100%, but starting in 2013, 2014, they paid 50%. That will continue this year. We do not know what the healthcare insurance premium will be until the ERS, the Employee Retirement System Board, has their meeting in May. We're expecting a 7% increase this year, which costs will be passed on to the employee. Fifty-eight percent of our revenue comes from maintenance tax. 2016, uncertified preliminary estimate appraisal role information will be available in May. The certified appraisal role information will be available July 25th. I would remind you that there was a little brouhaha with the software. We've been assured, and adamantly assured, I should say, that it's now caught up and everything is in place for 2016. We've been told that there's going to be a 14% increase. This seems rather large, and there's an expectation that this could trigger a significant number of protests before the Appraisal Review Board, which, of course, could hold up the increase. So we're not banking on a significant increase in the tax valuation this year. I would also remind you that the tax rate is 14.950. Just by way of reminder, last year, you increased the tuition for in-district from $55 to $59, out-of-district from $86 to $106, out-of-state and non-resident from $205 to $255. Tuition is approximately 20% of our revenue. So you have the state appropriations at 19%, maintenance tax at 58%, and tuition at 20%. For comparison of the tuition, you can see that we are number eight. Actually, shouldn't that be number nine? There's two number eights in there. Yeah, okay, that makes us number nine. Anyway, we're ahead of Collin County in in-district tuition. We're number seven for out-of-district tuition. And out-of-state and non-resident, we're number three. All right. Another consideration for the budget, you may have heard that the Department of Labor is looking at increasing the overtime regulation threshold for exempt status, and that will have a bottom-line budgetary effect if that goes into effect, and we should know possibly in July of this year. That has not been finalized. Next slide. Some of the data that you'll need to consider. Since tuition is at 20% of the budget, you can look at these slides and see that we do that piece of the budget is predictable, that we have full-time equivalents that have stayed stable throughout the last three years. On May 9th, you have a retreat, and I'll be bringing to you, actually, Joy Gates Black will be bringing to you, a strategic enrollment plan. We've never actively recruited students, and that'll be part of the plan, but for this coming up year, you can probably count on a stable enrollment such as this. Salary increases, just by way of reminder of what has been done in the past, 2013 to 14, 3.5%. 14, 15 was 3%. 15, 16 was 3%. Each 1% raise costs 2.2 million, which includes fringe benefits. You all asked, what is the cost per student? And here are the numbers. You can see it's gone up somewhat each year over the past three years. To get to those calculations, the data is using total expenditures reported from a document called the Report of Fundable Operating Expenses, RFOE, which is submitted annually every year to the CO Board, and this includes faculty and other salaries plus operating expenses broken down by instructional discipline. Next slide. You all also asked for operating costs per square footage. You can see the numbers up there. Let me point out to you that the total square footage does not include leased or off-campus facilities. Of course, if that was considered, it would be less. Property and programs. The TXU property, when Chancellor Hadley started with the properties last year, she put up the TXU property, so that's where I'll start and bring you along with where we have come this year. When she started last year, she noted that an RFP had been completed and issued for April 15, 2015. Since then, extensive meetings have been held with external stakeholders, and a report and recommendation will be presented to the IP Committee at the May 11, 2016, meeting. Northeast Campus Center of Excellence for Visual, Technical, and Performing Arts. Since Chancellor Hadley put up the slide last year, we have redrawn the TIFF boundaries, which have been approved by the TIFF, the appropriate TIFF. An RFQ will be issued at the end of April for the design firm. The Innovation Forum has redone its report and recommendations, and those are completed. And new programs, proposed programs have been included to add on entertainment management, sound engineering, theater, electrical, and lighting programs. Oh, I would also point out on the RFQ, responses will be due back in late May or early June. An evaluation team will review the responses and develop a short list of firms to interview, and an agreement will be negotiated with a firm by mid-July. If you look at the list of projects for the Innovation Forum, the most highly ranked project is the Southeast Culinary Arts Program. As part of the rationale, or the elevator speech for the program, it says, "With this potential expansion, faculty and staff would engage students in the subject matter by helping them achieve their ultimate goal of graduating and moving from the classroom seat into a job by gaining real-world experience with a larger classroom environment relevance and engagement." I would point out that Southeast Campus has added an additional certificate to its program of pastry certification and a new program of events planning. Another facility that warrants consideration is the Northeast Early College High School. If you will... no, excuse me, Northwest Early College High School. If you will recall, the Northwest was one of the first early... it was the first early college high school in 2010. It opened its doors in 2010. The third senior class will be completing their studies this academic year, resulting in a total of 120 early college high schools earning their AA degree over the past three years. Unfortunately, at... in 2010, we weren't quite as... organized isn't the word, but focused on building an early college high school as we are now. So that's resulted in modular buildings being built on top of tennis courts, because we have access to utilities, students using classrooms throughout the campus with regular college students. There's no place large enough for all the students to have lunch at the same time, so they go in shifts at 10:30. So there's a real need for focusing on that early college high school. So those are just some considerations from the facility's perspective. So in conclusion, we anticipate the enrollment to have little growth, and state appropriations will remain the same. While there's no increase in tuition, I would point out to you that when you increased the tuition, we only saw half the year with the increase in tuition. So this year, we'll have the full year, which will be close to $3 million increase in the tuition over last year, since we'll have fall and spring this year. The tax appraisal values will have a healthy growth, but protests may be high compared with past years, so finance encourages me to use caution with this. And now I'm going to ask for questions, comments, and guidance as we enter the planning and assessment phase.
One of the words that you used, maybe it's... I'm sorry.
We don't have a print out in front of us, so Shelley, he may need for you to...
Yeah, I just thought, one of the... you did say, in regard to the increments that we may have in evaluations, you said not significant, but it's... could be 14% above? I mean, what... are you just saying, we don't know yet? We just don't know not to anticipate anything, quote, "significant"? Can you be more precise on that, or can Nancy be more precise on that?
What I meant to say is they're projecting 14%, but with the protests, we should not expect to see significant bump this year, that we might not see it coming in this year.
We may not see it coming in this year.
Correct, yes.
So basically, everything's kind of flat, except for tuition?
Yes.
And, okay, tell us, maybe it's too early, but tell us how much the health insurance, the cost of... the cost of our faculty is going to go up or less? What is... what is the effect of non-fundable increases in what we're getting from the state? What effect is that going to have on us? So I'm trying to figure out, we're going to be paying... our employees are going to be paying more for insurance and so forth?
The health insurance, we're projecting 7%. We won't know until the ERS meets in May, but we're thinking it's going to be about 7%.
What I'm talking about, we may have to have a salary increase, and what do you think about that? Is that too early to ask about?
It's not too early to ask about and think about.
I want to think about that, because there's some significant increases in non-funded stuff coming from the state. I think we ought to think about that, although it could be controversial, but I don't want us to go down in salary. You know, keep even or maybe a little above. You know, it's up to the board to decide, of course, but our most important investment is our faculty and our staff and people who work with us or for us or with us.
I'm guessing, by the way, that 14% won't be 14, but I'd be surprised if it's that high. It wouldn't end up being somewhere around 10, which is still a pretty... which is still a pretty good shot. I was going to actually check with... see if we could kind of get a general feel from the other board members, because when we studied the performing arts thing, basically, it consumed most of the surplus funds that we would have had for capital projects over the next couple, three years, and a couple of these others, the culinary, the on-campus high school, add significantly to the cost. And so I'm wondering how the other trustees feel about folding those three projects into some sort of relatively short-term debt package, maybe somewhere around seven to 10 years, so that we could get them all done at once? Because I think unless we have a substantial revenue increase, that you're not going to be able to do all three fairly promptly without something like that. So it's okay with me, I just wonder if I could kind of get sort of a general idea if anybody's extremely resistant to that idea or not. And I'm not talking about, you know, floating bonds, because that would require a taxpayer increase, but rather just increase, spreading this debt over a few more years.
As a matter of fact, I kind of prepared a statement on that, very subject, because I am concerned about debt. I'm concerned about state funding going down, and we have got a... and tuitions are kind of... we're going to have to stay kind of flat. Additional revenues, Conrad, we've got a new committee on that, but that's a long-term thing for me. I mean, it's something that's going to take a long time to get additional revenues, and it's a very tedious process. And I agree with trustee Carter that we need to do something long-term, not... maybe not just this budget, but further on, to have maybe our finance committee study what are the paper tools, investment tools, or the paper we can issue or whatever, what kind of debt we can issue, this not as painful, you know, could be as painless as possible, to build up our maintenance fund. I am very concerned, and so is trustee Louise, because I've heard her talk about it, about that long list of projects that we have for maintenance that are being postponed, because we're going to have these new additional projects. And we've got to either, as I understand it, the way we did pay-as-you-go, and we've got pay-as-you-go, and it's not sustainable, I don't think. So somehow, we need to study this, in my view, probably on a longer-term process of establishing a fund or something for maintenance and so forth. There is a thing called tax bonds, but we can't do that, maybe, maybe not. I mean, it could be pretty cheap, but we've got to study it, and that's what bond lawyers are all about. They can tell us about that. What kind of paper can we use? Okay, I totally agree with you. I am not... I am in favor of doing something that is painless as possible to build up our... we don't have a pay-as-you-go fund.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not a finance attorney, but...
Well, no, I mean...
But basically, as I see it, you have two kinds of debt. One of them is general obligation, which voters would have to approve, and by so approving, they literally give you permission to tax for it. I don't think this board is willing to do that. The other type of bond, no matter... or loan, is basically revenue bonds, where you're pledging some percentage of your revenue for a given project, which is, for example, basically, wasn't a bond, but that's basically what we did when we bought the Alliance facility. I mean, we're using proceeds. My only concern was that this cost of these three projects is so significant that we wouldn't be able to get them done right away, and I think at least two of them need to be done right away. But... and the other one is... But, and the other one is, is, is something we've been talking about a long time, we finally just need to get moving on it, so.
There is a thing called, it's, it's called tax maintenance notes, and it doesn't require a vote, but I've, I've looked at it, and if you look on the Tyler Junior College website, they had a very, a very, very intensive structure of passing or approving those kinds of notes, which are not voted on, but getting the community on board. And these are, these are not long-term things, these are short-term things. And money is cheap right now, more or less, it's cheap. But Tyler Junior College, if you go and look on their website, they went through a very, they went through the whole process, it, it did connect to taxes, and I, I wasn't able to, to analyze it that much. But they, but they went through, they, they had a strenuous process of evaluating what kind of maintenance needs are needed, where they are, tours, they got the community involved, and by the end of the day, everybody had, had, had passed off on it. And then they have a fund for maintenance, but that's just an idea.
How much is, by the way, switching subject, how much is that 7% increase in a health insurance amount to total, about, ballpark?
That's a Nancy question.
Paying according to what you chose, if it was just employee only, of course, the state paid everything, state only paid.
I understand that, but I'm just asking about the increase.
Probably $25.
$25 a person?
A person, yeah.
7%?
But the premium is like 800.
That sounds, okay, somebody divided 25 by 7.
No, per month.
Per month, 25 a month.
25 a month, is 7%?
Per month, per person.
So anyone in the family who's on.
Sounds like more than 7%.
Yeah, I asked, I mean, I don't know how much, it depends which, if the people is a family plus employee or family, that's the higher, I've been talking about highest, lower probably 14, 11.
Well, if it was, if your increase, if your insurance increased 1,000 bucks a year, it'd be 70 bucks. So you're saying that the increase is going to be at $4,000 a year?
No, no, no. Premium increase per, let's just say right now, like 800 some dollars is for family plus employee.
Uh huh.
So 800, other 800, 500 is paid by the state. So employee pays 300. So if 300, 7% is by $21 per month.
Okay.
They, they don't pay the whole premium, because we matching, state matching a bunch.
Okay.
I mean, 50. But 25%.
So, so it's more like 300 to 500 a year, depending on how much insurance?
Yeah.
Okay. Historically, have we passed all that cost on?
To the employees?
When we have insurance, yes, to the employees, or have we split it sometimes?
Well, we have to pay because of the state.
No, I'm asking just the college. Historically, when we have a insurance increase, have we, that, have we historically passed all of that on to the employees?
We usually ask for the wage, salary increase, the part of it because subsidized for the people had to pay insurance to the people.
So you're trying to take that into consideration when you give the salary increase?
Right, right.
Okay.
Well, I, I guess, I'm not, to answer your question, Trustee Carter, I'm not against short-term financing to take care of, to avoid extending our maintenance or deferred maintenance. But we, we had this, this consultant that come in that said we could do the Performing Arts Center and do the necessary maintenance, so, and I'm not sure if.
These are new capital projects, we're talking about two more here that we did not discuss at that time.
But he also said that we did have additional funds, and, and I'm not sure that I believe everything he said, you understand, but I, but, but he did say we would have an extra, I think the figure was $25 million in addition to that, that we could.
But how many of those projects were, were critical? How many were way down here where we didn't have, you know, you were assuming we were not going to be taking care of some of these projects way down? And I believe what's happening, what happened with Irma Hadley when she was chancellor was, okay, Kelt, make a priority list, push stuff way down that you really don't need. And I, I'm not real sure that we don't need some of that stuff that really wasn't needed back then. I really don't believe that.
I had a question for Ms. Petty as well, so last year, we, we dropped that sort of deferred maintenance budget, I think it's around 25 million. So what would you be asking for this year? And that, as I recall, that took a six or seven million dollar whack out of your, your initial request.
Nina, remind us about Fund 70 and how that all works.
Okay, two, two different.
Two things.
And maybe Nancy is better for finance to.
Nancy, come back.
To talk about funds.
No, I'm, I'm asking what you're, you're going to be asking for.
Well.
For, I'm talking about basically deferred, not deferred, but maintenance that we need to do, we've got new roofs, new electrical, all this other stuff that are just part of the maintenance of our system. Not new stuff, just taking care of what we've got.
Okay, that's a, it's a bigger-than-a-breadbox answer. Okay, so we probably have in the vicinity of around 250 million to 300 million dollars worth of infrastructure issues that we've categorized and prioritized in our exercise in January, when we were asked to, with the consultant, was to look at if we were to prioritize what were top most important issues that we were to look at over the next four years. We took about 50 million of those 250 to 300 million, I've got my infrastructure guys here, and we phased that over a four-year period. So, and that was to, many of those were to accommodate the visual and performing art at the Northeast Campus, to ensure that we have the right infrastructure there to support that building, and then safety and security and lighting and all, you know, energy and all the other things that we have to do around the district. And so when we talked about that, we talked about there was about 25 million in funds that we would get to do normal course of business, and like this last year, the number is around, are we at 18 million team in terms of what we're looking at for infrastructure this, in this year's budget? Is that 12? Okay, so we're at 12 million this year. And we were contemplating that we would, can anybody remember the number of what we were contemplating for next year, around the same vicinity, around 15 million? And that chips off, you know, towards that 300.
Sure.
So.
And the more you chip off, the new stuff comes up. You'll never catch up, so, yeah.
So it's a pretty minimal amount.
Okay.
To address that 300 million.
I'm just, I'm just curious if there was some giant surprise number coming up down the road. I, 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 thank you, I appreciate it.
We're pretty geared to do pay-as-you-go, so.
Yeah.
You know, unless there's some influx of money other than pay-as-you-go, we're going to keep just chipping away at it and deal with the things that are the most critical.
But if there's a crisis, certain emergency or a fallen wall or roof.
As Mark and Nancy always tell me, we're going to address those things, and we're going to have funds to do that every year, so that.
Crisis funds.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, I'm not sure I answered.
An insurance, yeah.
I'm not sure, did I answer your question?
Yeah, it sounds like you're okay. I was afraid you were going to come up with, say, well, I'm going to need 40 million, and which blows that whole thing out of the water, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would the team answer this any other way? Good.
Thank you, ma'am. Let me ask one more insurance question. Not, is the 7% the entire cost? Are we just talking about a 7% increase to that portion of the, that the employees pay?
Okay, the entire cost is the premium entire cost. Let's just say 800. They're going to increase that $56.
Okay.
Every, other 800, 500 is paid by state, they reimburse us, reimburse TCC. So employee will wind up 56, 3% minus the 500 state pay us.
Yeah, but the whole 7% increase is dropping to them, it sounds like, for the whole cost.
The whole premium, they put it as a 7%. Sure, but your last year, it was probably the same thing, last year, last year, their premium cost.
I just, I just think it's, it's an important number when you're looking at salary increases, to have a realistic perspective of what people's additional, yeah, costs are going to be.
Yeah.
We, I, we're just doing an overview now, we don't have to come up with this right now, it's just, it's just a curiosity, and I think an important one.
Yeah, to, to me, the, the big bear in the room is the Performing Arts Center.
Yes, clearly.
If we don't know what that number is, or we haven't set a number, a maximum number, and until we do that, we don't know if we have the funds to, to do these other projects.
Well, I think it's like, it's like Ms. Petty said. We give her a number and they, and they build it to that, so.
Well, that's, but it has to meet the need.
Yeah.
And, and to talk about these other ways of financing, I think that's healthy.
Yeah.
But we, we don't know at this point that we need it.
Maya?
So your question was, and this is my opinion, that I am in favor of the board exploring the options to address the maintenance issues and the three major capital improvement projects.
My comment would also be a little bit more, I have these little bullet points. First and foremost, there was an intention to operate under pay-as-you-go starting 1997 to make that happen. And I think this college has been tremendously beneficial with the, the way we operate. Having said that, you know, we're coming into a delta per se, and I want to remind everybody that with PFM, they were charged as a related to the Visual, Technical and Performing Arts Center to structure a financial view based on pay-as-you-go and see what that model would look like. In addition, because, because we've operated that way, we wanted to see what that looked like and if we could bear the cost of a performance arts center at that level. So having said that, with all the other new projects coming online, what we know about the maintenance, I would certainly look at some short-term funding. I think our credit's good, I think we can be creative there where we're not going out for general obligation bonds, so I think that's always an opportunity. In addition, though, I would like to know from the Kelt and the academic side what those critical projects or priorities are, and also more cost certainty, whether it's for the performing arts or whether it's for early high school education. So having said all that, you know, I'm, I'm open, and I just, I just don't want to do anything to compromise the maintenance, for sure, so.
Ms. Yell?
Yes, I too am in favor of looking and exploring some alternative financing methods, particularly as, I think there's some opportunities where we can leverage some of the work that we're doing at some of the campuses, especially maintenance-type projects. I see some of the projects that come up, seems like we're, if we've waited too long, we're having to spend more money to do things, but if we have multiple projects, we could just finance all of those at one time, maybe we can leverage some of the work and potentially save some money along the way.
I would just like to. I don't see any matches in your contracts. I'd just like to add one other thing. Talking about the Innovation Forum and pay-as-you-go, I think those go a little bit hand-in-hand because first, we've been able to just enjoy the opportunity of new ideas. So with those new ideas, we do have a long list, and some of those ideas merit a lot of credence to go forward. Others maybe not are a priority at the moment, but I think we've had the luxury of just thinking way out of the box, which is a great thing. So I think looking at our finances, we need to probably rein it in, but keep on thinking big ideas and, and new, new models. So we just have to be physically responsible, whatever that looks like.
Mr. Greenhill, your light's on, you have more?
No, I don't, I really was, I, I hope that, I kind of got the impression in visiting campuses that we have a cycle of, we have five campuses and four campuses, and that we kind of put a lot of money in one campus, one every year. I mean, maybe that's the case, maybe it's not, but that, I don't think that works very well. I think that we've got to look at the campuses as a whole, and, and, you know, for, every four years is sort of, kind of late, late coming for some of those campuses, especially the South Campus. I understand the fountain doesn't work now.
The fountain is back.
Oh, the fountain is back working.
The fountain's the first thing that quits in every capital project I've ever seen.
Any other comments for Ms. Robinson and Kelt and?
Do you want to show the premium?
Yes, it was up there for a few minutes. Shelley, if you want to, the premium scale, the scale of insurance expenses.
Pretty much it will be same. Yeah, pretty much it will be same pattern, say, that according to Austin, they are supposed to project in 7%. So it's pretty much, this, the change is your employee, our employee will pay.
So there's no increase projected for single member only?
Single member, they always pay the whole thing, state always matching the whole thing.
Well, I just think it's important that we factor that in when we're looking at compensation, that's all.
All right, if, Mrs. Petty?
I just wanted to make one, one minor qualification, just in the, in the language, just, because I want to make a difference between maintenance, deferred maintenance, because we really maintain our campuses really well out of our operational budget. What we're really talking about is infrastructure, and if you don't maintain your infrastructure, the 300 million, it can turn into maintenance issues. But I think for the most part, just so we're all on the same page, we're really, because we do maintain, we do the maintenance of the campuses in our operations. So maintenance is happening, and that's ongoing, we have a nice, healthy budget to be able to provide that on an ongoing basis. It's really the infrastructure that if it's not addressed over a period of time, then becomes a maintenance issue. If you're not taking care of your fountains, right, and you're not maintaining them on, and you just ignore them, all of a sudden, it becomes an infrastructure issue that becomes bigger. So I just hope that's a good clarification when we're using language, because we, we really talk about infrastructure, and then when we talk about maintenance, it's in our operational area that kind of happens on an ongoing basis. Does that help?
And we have been given the long spreadsheet of projects.
Those are infra, yeah, those are clearly infrastructure.
So as we get into the weeds here with the budget, we may need to look at that again and have you or Ms. Chang or someone tell us what the priorities are today and what funds might be accessed, what other avenues of financing might be sought, and.
So what you, what you, Chancellor Robinson gave you in January in that spreadsheet?
Right.
Is about 50, 60 million dollars of infrastructure projects that we prioritized over four years. And those are all in different categories, and we certainly can give you the bigger list of the 250, 300 million by category and how they look and what would be the priority. I, I mean, if you handed us 300 million today, it would be very difficult to execute and implement that, but we could give a reasonable, you know, five-to-seven-year plan on how we could execute something like that if you were looking at some other method besides pay-as-you-go.
I would suspect the board would like to see that, agree?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes?
If, if possible, if it isn't already on the list, could you identify how long it's been on the list for us?
Sure.
Okay, so we could see some of these may be older than others.
Absolutely, yeah. And that probably is what constitutes prioritization, is the ones that are older, but, you know, safety and security and lighting and some of those things, and, you know, we've been doing a great job on pay-as-you-go.
Right.
Addressing, for instance, the South Campus, and now some of the issues on the Northeast Campus, the older campuses, so, absolutely, we can do that for you, so you can clearly see.
Just to get a clear, because I'm, you know, some of them have seen this list several times, and I'd just like to see how long it's been there.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Robinson and all of you who participated in preparing this. We'll take a 13-minute break and be back here at 6 o'clock for the board meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have one minute to six.
No one's paying attention.
Are you trying to get, are you the bailiff? Are you trying to get everybody?
Thank you for your attention, and we'll start this session with presentations on student success, programs and projects. And I'll ask Mrs. Robinson to introduce our speakers.
First, we're going to hear from Dr. Madison on Trinity Campus. Dr. Madison is going to pass out, he has several, he has a whole presentation. He's limited to the sign language piece, but he's going to pass out his entire presentation that has a summary of a lot of good things that they're doing at Trinity River. So, take it away, Dr. Madison.
Thank you, Chair Appleman, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Robinson, and to those of you who make up our most engaged audience, good evening. Most engaged. On behalf of Trinity River, on behalf of the Trinity River Campus, I thank you for this opportunity to share some of the progress that the campus has made with respect to both campus and district-wide efforts to improve student success and completion. I would be remiss, however, if I did not note that our progress to date would not be possible without the tremendous effort of faculty and staff who are committed to helping us achieve our hallmarks, namely the one that echoes our unshakable focus on student success. We have a packet, and it contains some of the successes of our current academic year and is partitioned into three segments where we spotlight enrollment trends in our efforts to understand the diversity of student enrollment patterns to better facilitate students' entry into and completion of programs, of their program of study at our campus. We also have identified some points of pride with respect to success trends at the campus level where in some cases, we use district-wide success as a benchmark or yardstick to measure our performance. And lastly, we will share an exciting update on one of our signature academic programs, the Sign Language Interpreting Program. And if you're not careful, you might learn some sign language before you leave this evening. I will ask Professor Irene Thrower to come to the podium at this time, but before she comes, I would certainly like to acknowledge Dr. Brian Stewart and the Academic Affairs Team for their hard work in preparing this presentation, the packet that you've received. And if you would just give them a hand for me, it would be greatly appreciated. And now, I will turn it over to Professor Thrower.
Thank you.
Who has been newly elected as the President of our Faculty Association at the Trinity River Campus.
President Appleman, Chancellor Robinson and Board of Trustees members, thank you for having us tonight. When we presented our Sign Language Interpreting Program to you a few years ago, we presented what we were about, what it is that this Sign Language Interpreting Program does. Today, we want you to see all of the program growth and to demonstrate to you that we are indeed meeting the needs of our community. We have tonight, too, Sammy Shepherd, our program coordinator, who has been the program coordinator for approximately three years, although no stranger to the program. She is an alumni of the program. She has been an adjunct instructor for us, a full-time instructor, and then took over as program coordinator three years ago. So, if we look at the infographic, there's a lot of good information for you, but let's start with that pink arrow over to the left, the class of 2014. As you can see, using the most recent data that we have, our state certification rates for our class of 2014 are at 90%. So, nine out of 10 of our students who attempted the BEI state licensure test indeed passed that. In comparison, you'll see the blue number to the right is a 39% state average. So, you can see that we are indeed sending our students and making them successful. This May, we will be awarding 111 completions of degrees and certificates. We'll have a total of 21 degrees and 90 completion certificates, and we're very proud of that in light of all the degree changes and certificate changes that we've had over the last three years to get us to that, to that rate. As indicated by the green arrow, you'll see our slip enrollments. In comparison of from 2009 to 2015, you'll see a 37.04 percentage increase in certificate programs. And when we look at our degree programs, you're looking at a 7.56% increase. So, our students are not only enrolling, but they are indeed completing with us. As you can see, we have a, if you look at comparison between 2011 and 2012 academic year to 2014 to 2015, you see a 52.38% increase in certificates. And the biggest statistic of all is below that, we're at 114% increase in degrees awarded. So, we are indeed busting at the seams and growing. But, once they complete with us, we send them out to the job force. And as indicated by the blue arrow, you see the need for interpreters. In the state of Texas, there are 580 deaf persons for every one interpreter. So, there's actually far more work than we can even provide graduates for. With our last arrow, you see the demand salary. It's the fourth fastest-growing profession in the nation. It's the fourth fastest-growing profession in the nation, and our starting entry level, hourly rate is anywhere between $18 to $30 for an entry-level interpreter. So, these students wouldn't be where they are without our wonderful community industry partners that we have. One of the incredible partners that we have is Sorensen VRS, which is the number-one employer of interpreters worldwide. And we have a partnership with them that is invaluable and gives our students in our practicum site amazing real-world experience. With us today is Michael Bothell, a program alumni, industry executive at Sorensen, and an advisory member. And I'd like to bring him up just to say a short comment of our relationship that we have with him.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you so much for allowing me to come up here. I do represent Sorensen Video Relay Service. Essentially, what we do is we interpret phone calls for deaf people all across the country. Over in the last 10 years, the demand for interpreters, especially for Sorensen and Video Relay Service, has increased exponentially. I'm looking at the slide, and it says, there's a, for every one interpreter, there's 580 deaf people, and that statistic is absolutely true. I can tell you that the demand for interpreters is incredibly needed for us right now. We, as Irene had mentioned, we are the largest employer of interpreters across the country, and the center that we have here in the Dallas-Fort Worth Center is one of our larger centers. It is easy to say and absolutely true that that center employs graduates of this program more than any other programs that we have in the area. Our largest percentage of our interpreters from the Dallas-Fort Worth area comes from this program. I'm kind of partial to it because I'm an alumni of this program as well, so absolutely love it. But no, we are incredibly grateful, and the students that we get to come in and we partnership with to do internships have been phenomenal. So, I just want to say thank you so much for having this program and allowing us to meet some of those demands that we have for interpreters, and we have so much more demands and jobs available for interpreters. Thank you.
At this time, I would like to bring up Cheryl Saunders, one of our full-time instructors. And she is going to, along with the students in the back, demonstrate just a few signs for you in hopes that you can spread the TCC word in sign language.
Hi. I want you to copy what I sign. C, C. C looks like this. Make a C handshake. I like that. Our motto is success within reach. We probably have to go through that. Success. There's reach, and success within reach. The sign for Fort Worth looks like this. Start with an F. Just copy what I do. F looks like that. Down to it, L looks like that.
W. Okay.
Watch the handshake.
Who let the new kid on the block? This is the only one I know.
Thank you, Cheryl.
At this time, we have going around a bag, and you're going to get the same shirt that you see our students wearing from one of our community outreach events, Imagination Celebration. Along with, if you need a little bit more practice on your signs, we have demonstration, a video demonstration of the signs that you learned, plus a few more. We have a success story from a student who was a student in our program, is now an adjunct instructor with us, Erin Casey, she's here as well. And along with a message from Cheryl. So, enjoy, and I hope you enjoy learning sign language. Thanks for having us.
Can I ask you a question? As she's interpreting, is it the same for someone that understands English, as Spanish, as Russian, or whatever? Is the sign language the same in each language?
I'm going to let our program coordinator answer that.
It's a great question, and it's a little bit different. What is similar about it is that the grammatical structures are very different. Many people think sign language aligns with English grammar, and actually, it doesn't. It's more aligned linguistically with Spanish or German, as far as grammatical structure and syntax. So, while she is interpreting and listening to the English, it's not coming out at all like English. So, it's a very different structure. If you saw it written, you would think the person maybe did not know how to read or write, but if you signed it, it's absolutely grammatically correct and perfect in their language. So, the ASL's not a written language, so.
So, when you sign, is there significance between left and right-handed?
Sometimes, on the whole, no. Some people sign that are left-handed. I happen to be a left-handed person who can only sign on my right, and that would be because Mike Senatell made me as a student many years ago. But many people sign left or right-handed, and just sometimes in space and what you're setting up it may mean.
Thank you. You have your gifts, but we would be remiss if the students couldn't get a picture with you. So, the students, we were lined up to get a picture with our Board of Trustees.
These are all graduating this May.
And do they have J O Bs?
And the faculty?
For you, Mike, did you create that program on Northwest Campus a million years ago?
Can we all get in?
Almost, yeah. I was asking if they all have jobs, and they have to take a state test first.
Dr. Madison? Dr. Madison? I just wanted to make sure, I will read this before I go to bed tonight, okay? I know it's important to you.
There's a lot of good information in here. Thank you so much for sharing it with us.
And Board members, I wanted to point out to you, since we have graduation coming up, that the owner of the company that does our sign language for graduation is an alumni of our program.
Of course. All right, next, college readiness.
Yes, Dr. Joey Gates-Black is going to present on college readiness.
Thank you, Chancellor Robinson, Mrs. Appleman, and members of the board. The goals of 60 by 30 Texas, the only way to reach those goals is for Tarrant County College to work much more closely with our school districts. So, tonight, I want to share with you just one example of how we are working to increase the college readiness of high school seniors. House Bill 5, which passed in 2013, had a specific focus on the college readiness of high school seniors who were not able to pass the state academic readiness exam. And so, therefore, these students are not considered college-ready. To address the needs of these students, school districts are required to work with institutions of higher ed to develop college preparatory courses in math and English-language arts. However, these courses are voluntary. The students don't have to take them. Tarrant County College is working with a number of our school districts to develop, we've developed the curriculum, we've provided professional development for their teachers, and we go and proctor the final exam of the courses. Students who pass the final exam are considered college-ready. However, they must enroll in Tarrant County College within one year of taking that exam. Otherwise, they have to take further assessment. This chart shows the number of students who have taken advantage of the exams in 2014-15 academic year and the current academic year as well. As you can see, for English Language Arts, 49 students participated in the course, and all 49 of them in 2014-15 became college-ready. For math, 65 students participated in the college preparatory courses, and by the way, it's two courses, and 40 of them became college-ready. So, 89 of those students became college-ready in English Language Arts and Math, and of that 89, 31 of them enrolled in Tarrant County College that following fall semester. For this current academic year, we saw a significant decrease in the number of students choosing to participate, but 21 students chose to participate in the English Language Arts preparatory courses, and of that, 15 of them became college-ready. Math, we only had 16 of those students, and 14 of them became college-ready, for a total of 29 students becoming college-ready. We won't know what number from that 29 are going to come to us until the fall semester. And I know these numbers are small, but I believe they show a lot of promise as an opportunity for now ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students who are not college-ready to become college-ready, so that they're able to enroll in dual credit at their high school, and then get a start on their college career. Do you have any questions? Yes. It's, well, it's voluntary. The high school students, this is right now specifically for high school seniors, and it's voluntary.
Numbers are good. How do you propose we could market it better, increase enrollment? I mean, the results are good, the number of students is small.
It is something we are going to be discussing with our ISD partners later on this spring. The chancellor's going to be scheduling a meeting, and we're going to be having that discussion, because we have to work together on this. And I think this is a perfect tool, and this is proof that it works, so. Mm-hmm, it is. That it's scalable in terms of, well, it's offered by the teachers at the high schools, and so, all the students have to do is choose to take the course. We've provided the professional development, trained the teachers. Yes, so it's not our faculty going there to teach those courses.
And the cost to the students, of course, is nothing?
No.
Dr. Gates, which school districts are represented in these numbers?
I have that, I don't have that with me tonight, but I can share that with you.
Sure, that'd be great, thank you.
Other questions?
But it's a limited number, it's not, I think they're 29 or something in the Tarrant County area.
It's a limited number that are taking advantage of it, but we want to make sure that they know it's available. When House Bill 5 passed in 2013, some of them may have changed roles and what have you. Some of the principals may not have been in their roles at that time, and so, it's an opportunity to kind of refresh their memories, you know, to show that this is something they need to take advantage of. And certainly with House Bill 505, which now allows students as early as ninth grade to do dual credit, but for us, it's if they're college-ready. And so, if they're not college-ready, they're not able to do dual credit.
Board members, we've formed a task force in relation to dual credit, and we asked the ISD superintendents which one of them wanted to be members, and they all wanted to be on the task force. So, we're hoping to use that task force as a vehicle to promote this college readiness also.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into Board Action Items. Approval of the minutes of the meeting of March 24th. Motion to approve.
Can you approve?
Dr. Morrison, second, Ms. Ayala. Any discussion questions? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Don't have a consent agenda, moving on to committee reports. Mr. Carter, Audit and Finance.
Audit and Finance Committee meets Monday.
And the Governance Committee met earlier this week to plan the agenda for tonight, institutional planning. Ms. Vandergriff?
Let's see, we met on Tuesday. It was an informative committee meeting with Dr. Joey Gates-Black being there to kind of follow up this same informed topic, whether it's 60/30 or pathways and so forth. And so, it was just really grateful that she was there. May 11th, we'll look forward to the RFP results. RFQ.
Whatever. Item number 10, Tarrant County College Police Department, Chief Williams, nice to have you with us.
Thank you, ma'am. President Appleman, members of the board, Chancellor Robinson. In 2011, House Bill 3389 required each law enforcement agency that routinely conducts vehicle stops as a part of their duties to compile information on public contacts that are made and present that information to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement and the governing body of their police agency. Texas law defines racial profiling as, as in law enforcement initiated action based on an individual's race, ethnicity, or national origin, rather than the individual's behavior or information identifying the individual as having been engaged in criminal activity. The reports you receive in your packets meet the information requirements that our agencies obligated to collect, report, and present to you for your information. It also shows that the Tarrant County College District Police Department is in full compliance with the Texas racial profiling law.
Any questions to the chief?
I just had one question. Thank you for the information. Do you have the breakdown by campus? Because I saw the totals, but I didn't see if you had it by breakdown.
No, ma'am, it's by the entire district.
Okay, is that some information that you could give us by campus?
Yes, ma'am. Because the way that Texas law is written, it didn't really specify how we break it down, whether it's by campus or whether it's by the entire district, so.
Right.
Definitely do that.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you. That is the way you do it.
Were you satisfied with it? Was there any area of concern that you had?
No, sir. We do an excellent job, and the supervisors do an excellent job at supervising the officers. We routinely check the, we have body cameras that we have as well. We do a routine job of looking at footage from the body cameras, as well as footage from the cameras in the cars. In addition to that, all the supervisors are required to review the reports that are submitted every day, so if anything that looks improper, we're on it pretty quick.
Do all officers have body cameras now?
Yes, sir, the ones that are on duty.
On duty, yeah, right.
If y'all review the executive summary, the words "in full compliance" are in every book point. We congratulate you on that. Appreciate it, too.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, and thank your officers.
Thank you.
Item number 11, consideration and approval of job order contracting general contractor services agreement with Chambers Engineering for Construction of Electrical Equipment Mezzanine for Building Services, Power Plant, South Campus, in the amount of $437,187,068. Ms. Petty?
Thank you. Good evening again. South Campus, part of our ongoing infrastructure improvements. This is a bit of a safety issue, and I think in the summary, it talks a little bit about the fact that in 1967, this area was built out, and so, we're in the process of improving it, moving the, so we're building a mezzanine. So, this is a construction part. So, in the summary, it talks about that we're going to be coming back to you in your summer. You also have this gold sheet that sort of lays out the work that's coming down the line. It probably is going to be beyond May, maybe June or July, that we'll come back to you for the equipment and installation, but this is an important part because it's the construction of the mezzanine, so that we can set it up. we can set it up, get it in. Any questions about it?
Yeah, what does one do in a mezzanine?
I'm sorry?
What does one do in electrical equipment, mezzanine?
What it's going to do is it's going to lift all this electrical work that's down ten feet below and bring it up to a level so that it's where it's safety, so it's not at a flood, prone to flooding and having electrical equipment, wiring and piping and all the electrical work down below. So the mezzanine will bring all this equipment and up to a level where it's safer for the team to be able to access it, and it won't be down below. And that actually opens up that area down below for other areas for storage and other things that we can use it for.
So now they're going down to like a basement area?
It's in a basement. It's down, right now, it's all down below, laying on the ground tent below. So it's bringing all this electrical work, so updating the electrical equipment, and so we're going to be buying new electrical equipment and installing that in a better location than down ten feet below.
I guess it's just the mezzanine works.
Oh, me. So is there staff in this mezzanine, or is this just a?
They work down there all the time, and Walt, I can see, is getting up, and he can tell you more about this than you ever wanted to know, but it, they do work down there. And it is a safety issue, having that electrical work down in an area that's, that does flood out. So Walt?
Yeah, the mezzanine is actually adjacent to an existing control room. You know, we talked about building controls a lot, and this will give us a little area to expand for this, but mostly it's for equipment. It'll also give us an area to put in a sprinkler riser so we can fire protect the area as well.
So is it ever flooded?
I don't believe the floor of it has flooded, the tunnels have flooded. I'm not exactly sure on how high it's gotten, but people historically who've been here longer than me could probably tell you.
It starts as high as about a foot deep in there.
Not cool. Okay.
Not good.
Okay, thanks.
Walt, excuse me, Walter, what is the square footage of the area that we're, this mezzanine construction is occurring?
I think it's, I believe it's twenty by about sixty, so whatever that, about twelve hundred square feet.
Okay, thanks.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Carter, second.
Second.
Ms. Vandergriff. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve, consideration and approval of by-board cooperative agreement with EnviroMatic to provide equipment and installation to upgrade building automation system to reliable controls for multiple buildings on Northeast Campus in the amount of $603,007. Ms. Petty.
The good news about, again, infrastructure issue that's important, obviously, in this campus, the good news is, as your summary states, this is the last that we're doing in the bu, building automation area for this campus. So we've seen a lot of these before, and we would appreciate an approval.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heed. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirteen, consideration and approval of indefinite delivery indefinite quantity service authorization agreement with Kamatsu Architecture to provide furniture assessments for Northeast Campus in the amount of $143,350. Ms. Petty.
Yes, this is a two-prong approach on this contract to do two things. One is to be proactive on a five-year plan for our classroom furniture assessment and replacement, similar to what we do in the infrastructure side, that we really need to be proactive on that. And it's also an effort to establish capacities based on code compliance or the maximum number of occupants per room, so it can be referred to and maintained each semester in our new software system, our scheduling software system at Astra that you've heard so much about. Chairs tend to move from room to room, and it's good to have benchmarks for these things. So this contract will take about ten months to complete, and it'll do two very important things for us at the same time. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Heed. Questions? Discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I just, one last comment. We had mercy on you with three items this month. It's going to be a busy next four months for us. We have a lot of work coming in in May, June, July, August, so I just want you to get ready. Next month, there's going to be a lot of items.
She's warning us.
I'm warning you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Shelton, consideration and approval of purchase equipment, parts, and systems to be installed in forty classrooms district-wide with pathway communications in the amount of $420,632.
This request supports a long-term AV upgrade plan for the AV technology throughout the district. And at this point, there'll be forty classrooms on four campuses, and they'll be the four older campuses. Trinity River is not included, because it's got newer installations, and of course, TCC Connect is not included, because it doesn't need it. But the, what, some of the good news here is this was budgeted for $680,000. Thank you, Richard, he gave me this information. Say hey. This was budgeted for $680,000, and the good news is $420,632, and this will be, for two years, it has been under budget. The installations will be done by our own media people who have been trained and certified to do this, which saves us a vendor cost. It also gives them the experience so that when we have failures, that they'll have the experience to fix them in-house. This equipment is five to seven years old, and it fails, and usually, technology fails when you don't need it to fail when you're trying to do a class or do a presentation. And we don't want that to hinder student success. If it's approved, we anticipate that media services will have the classrooms, this equipment installed in the classrooms by fall of 2016. We recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Mr. Heed, second.
Second.
Ms. Vandergriff. Any questions for Ms. Shelton?
Yeah, what, what are we teaching these forty classrooms? Is it something specialized? Because you spread that around five campuses.
Four campuses.
Yeah, four campuses, five, so what are we teaching?
They're not in specific classrooms, but equipment in certain classrooms, as it has been installed, it has reached end of life. And so actually, the faculties on each campus were gathered to, to suggest and say which equipment and which rooms need to be replaced.
So we're just phasing in? It's not a specific, to teach a specific topic?
Right.
So, all right.
And that's an ongoing, rolling, replacement kind of plan.
Okay. Does technology in this area change, you know, very frequently?
Some of it does. Media changes, you look at even the impact of social media in classrooms now, and you know that probably three or four years ago, people didn't use Twitter, the kinds of phones that we have, not the kind I have, but the kinds that my grandchildren have. You know, you can actually conduct classes on those things now, so the speed of the equipment that you need changes, the kinds of equipment that teachers need to support instructional technology to do projections, to do productions and presentations changes. Some of the, you know, if all you're doing is word processing or spreadsheets or that kind of thing, that doesn't change very much, and it doesn't need very fast processes. But some of the other kinds of things, you need video graphics and those kinds of things to do.
Motion to approve.
We already did that.
So moved. I'm sorry. You ready for the question? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have a related question. I am reading the terminology, district director of media services and media coordinators at each campus. And so my question is, so there's one media coordinator at each campus?
Yes.
So is there a backup person?
There are media staffs at each campus, but there's a coordinator that directs that media staff, and then there's a media director, David Mead, that is a district-wide media director. But there are backups there.
Okay, so anytime there's a major event, there should be somebody?
I know where you're going.
I'm only asking a question. I do not require an answer today, but I would like for that to be taken into considerations in your future budget discussions. Thank you.
That's a private thing. She was on campus, was it last Saturday?
The ninth. I wasn't going to go into that.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not going to go there, but everything worked out, but she was on campus last Saturday, Saturday before last, and they had a little media snafu, but it worked out. We got the equipment in there correctly.
You know, that's always the way it happens. You have guests in the house. The dishwasher stops up, the media.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton.
You're welcome.
And the staff did work until they got it corrected.
Okay.
On my telephone. That's why I need everybody's cellphone numbers. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're ready for item number fifteen. Consideration and approval of purchase of network equipment from General Data Tech in the amount of $427,129.90.
Aye.
This request is for, as Nina talked about infrastructure, about the technology infrastructure, this is the routers, the switches, the wireless access points, that are the stuff pedaling under the water as the data gets to you at your individual device. And these things last pretty reliably from about five to seven years, and then you have failures, intermittent failures that you can't predict. And many of ours have reached end of life, and we're asking for permission to replace these, these components of the network.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by?
Second.
Dr. Morrison. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Ayala?
I do, thank you. The, these are wireless access points that we're establishing, is that what you're saying?
Some of the things that need to be replaced are wireless access points.
Are we putting in ones that can hold a, I guess, the large capacity, or we just replacing it with existing? In other words, if it holds a hundred now, or we get a hundred going forward?
They're all large capacity.
Okay.
High-speed large capacity.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Other questions or comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. One more, Ms. Shelton. Item number sixteen, consideration and approval of five-year contract with TelePacific Communications for updated unified communication services in the amount of $436,725 for the five years.
This is a request to, and this is a new vendor for us, but this is a request to replace our current communications or telecommunications system, the old technology that's there, and a lot of you are familiar, even in your personal lives. The old technology is slower, it's not reliable, and we've got a lot of data passing over the, over our system. We need to replace the old technologies to unify our technology system that not only carries the voice, but carries voice and data. The, this Tele, Tele, TelePacific Communications will install network connectivity, they'll, they'll provide the testing to make sure it works. And Richard tells me that he's worked to deal with them, he doesn't trust them necessarily. What'd you give him, ninety days to make it work?
Yeah, what we did is we negotiated it.
He has to come to the microphone, but he doesn't trust him. That makes me nervous. This is Sullivan, Richard Sullivan. This is Richard Sullivan.
What we did, because they are a new vendor to us, is we negotiated a ninety-day proof of concept with them, so that we can see what their technical capabilities are and what their support systems are and how good it works. We've done several tests with AT&amp;T on this type of technology, and then we took it out to bid, and TelePacific was the lowest bidder for what we were looking for. And so not having that relationship like we do with other vendors, we wanted to put that relationship to a test, and so they agreed to a ninety-day.
Before initial payment?
Before the contract actually kicks in, yes.
Okay.
May I ask you another question in that regard?
Yes, sir.
It would be, it is a five-year, you also negotiated a month-to-month renewal, is that after five years? Is the term five years or what? Okay, it's five years, but you negotiated a, a rolling one-month renewal.
At the end of that time.
If you like it.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Other questions?
I do. Comments? Richard, can you explain a little bit, are we replacing hardware? Is this new software? Is it both?
Actually, what this is, is taking out technology that was installed or developed in the 1980s and putting it with newer technology. We're taking out old copper infrastructure and the equipment that does all the switching on the voice side.
Right.
And replacing it with fiber optic cables.
Okay.
And fiber optic technology. The other thing we're doing is we're increasing our number of calls, because at registration, we always get an overload and calls go busy, or they go on hold or something like that.
Right.
So we're increasing our bandwidth capabilities from two-hundred-and-fifty concurrent calls to well over three-hundred.
Okay.
And the nice thing about the technology we're putting in is if you use the old technology, you'd have to go and strain more wire.
Right.
With this technology, all we have to do is do a software change at the vendor, and we can open it up even more.
Got it, okay. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification.
If the changeover isn't successful in that ninety-day period?
We stay where we are and go look for other vendors.
Go back to the drawing board.
Yes, ma'am.
I want, I'll make one, kudos for, for your staff and for, for legal. Maria went through a kind of a test today, we had a conversation. We do read what we're, we read all these things, and I saw some, some troubling boilerplate in, in the agreement. Then I learned that we have what's called an addendum number one or number two, and that number one or two addendum solved all, everything that I thought was an issue. And kudos for our legal and you guys for keeping on top of that. Had to do with indemnification and arbitration and things like that, but it's, y'all did a great job. Thank you.
And this should be through, if you all approve it, it'll be through in three to four months.
Ms. Appleman, I do have one other question, if you don't mind. Can you explain to me what the five-year contract says for routing calls in and outbound through the disaster recovery site? So is this, do we have a DR site, or is it their, their DR site? Can you explain what that means, please?
You're welcome.
Left too quick.
We read. Actually, why we're going, one of the reasons we're going to this technology is because we are building our own disaster recovery site. This technology allows us to have two points of presence.
Okay.
One here and one there.
So one's the default and one is in the event?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
The only thing we have to do beyond that is put the equipment over there. And we've got about two-thirds of it built out now, and I keep asking for DR budget money and, you know, my predecessor or her predecessor was like, I'll get you what I can, but we can't go to the board and say, I need $750,000 to build it out. So it's going to take time.
So the plan is to have a DR site to recover what? What's like the recovery time? Are you looking for a specific recovery time or a certain amount of data that we're trying to recover?
Actually, what we've got right now, that's where all our test and development is for our ERP systems. And we're in the process of putting over a large storage array to take care of all of the network storage, P-drives and things of that nature.
Okay.
And with this, we've also got a backup phone system.
Okay.
Over there that will take advantage of this.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Appleman.
Motion to approve. Have we done that? I don't think we have.
I don't know.
So moved.
So moved. Have we, Tammy?
No.
Do we have a motion on? See, I did. Come on. So y'all, moved or approved? Mr. Greenhill seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Glad to have you with us, Ms. Shelton.
Thank you.
Y'all are still spending money in that shop.
So, I hope somebody made note of that seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar request for the D R C.
I never noticed that Tim was all that reluctant to come ask for a lot of money either, I thought he was shucking you on there, buddy, so.
Must be the nature of the IT beast. All right, Mr. McLendon is MIA, so Mrs. Chang is going to take us through the monthly financial report.
Next time we see Mr. McLendon, hopefully he'll be Dr. McLendon, he's working on his dissertation.
Oh, good for him.
Yes.
Chancellor, President of the Board, and I think the Chancellor did a so great job of budget adjust, budget board meeting, I just opened a question for if anything you want to ask for my system.
You're not gonna read us the question?
Thank you.
That's the best financial report we've ever had. Don't tell Dr. McLendon that we didn't miss him a bit. Thank you, Ms. Chang. Mrs. Robinson?
We don't have any new staff members.
Okay, all right. Data points. Board members, I thought I would put up two data points for TCC Connect. Wanted to show you, if you remember, the purpose of TCC Connect was to hopefully show some improvement for our online students. Chancellor Hadley noted our poor success rates for our online students, and said we needed to consolidate and do something different. And so, in two thousand and thirteen, when Dr. Morales got here, he got his arms around it, and you can see, the slide speaks for itself, success is defined as a grade C or better. And you see that we have improvement steadily for our online students. Next slide. Also under TCC Connect is Weekend College, and you see success rates there, too. And that's what I have for data points. Any questions?
Yeah, question on that first slide? Is that, at the bottom, is that enrollment? The twenty-five, three-eighteen, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes. So it's gone down that much? It's gone down, and that is, we're seeing that as a national trend, and that's one thing we want to focus on this year, is to improving our online enrollment. That's gonna be part of what you see May ninth on our enrollment presentation.
Okay.
Is there some demographic reason for that? I mean, you have a certain age group of students, they're enrolling, they take their online courses, and you don't have them again.
Dr. Morales, can you speak to that?
Good evening, yes, there is a combination of demographics and, you know, selection of, of the morality by, by students.
Yeah, I'm guessing there's some economic conditions correlations as well, that as things improve, enrollment goes down.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, we see some of that, too.
Those numbers actually look better than I customarily hear about online students. So I'm wondering how that shapes up with comparable online institutions like us? How are we doing compared to them?
Well, we, we are, we are the, the fourth largest online operation in Texas, if you will. Institutions of our size are experiencing similar-
Yeah, I know, but in terms of the, the success rate?
Oh, the success rate?
Yeah, how are we doing comparing to other institutions?
Well, I, I have a reference from, from national institutions, and, and we are pretty much in the, within the range of-
Is it the norm?
Yeah, pretty, pretty much.
Okay, you're gonna exceed that, though, aren't you?
Well, that's the goal.
Okay.
Very good. Do you compare to other community colleges or institutions of higher learning in general?
That is in the works, in terms of us benchmarking ourselves with, with other institutions in Texas.
Just any college or university?
Well, we, we could do it with anybody, you know, and we, we need to decide what would be the criteria, if it is gonna be a two-year, a four-year, or the size of the, of the cohort, if you will.
Well, you said we were fourth, and so is that of all universities?
Well, yes, that, that comes from a, a third party, if you will, entity that, that ranked institutions in Texas in two thousand and fourteen, and it's, and it's two-year colleges in that, in that case.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right.
Do you wanna comment on any of your activities? Yes. Shelley, do you have a few photographs? Oh, yes, Ms. Ayala is gonna talk about this one. We were at the Board of Trustees Institute in Santa Fe, so Ms. Ayala is gonna talk about that. We received a check- Big one. -Ms. Appleman and I for a hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars from Dan and Yogurt. And Dan and Yogurt's a great, I hadn't realized what a friend of TCC, we're their first choice for H R and for every time they think of sending somebody to school, they think of sending TCC. Went to a groundbreaking for the Arlington Career and Technical Center. So there we are, just having dug up some dirt. Went to Chicago to the AACC, had a big group there. Tyson's in the back there, nodding his head, he was one of the ones with us. Oh, we had a great, when Chancellor Hadley was alive, she started a conversation with Vietnam to do an M O U to bring over cohorts from Vietnam of students, and it's evolved to faculty. And I remember sending her a text telling her we had signed the M O U, but it didn't really take off, and she sent me back a text saying, that's what I'm talking about. So we have been working on finalizing it, and they sent over a whole contingent of people, and there we are at Trinity Point, having finalized the deal. And in September, they're gonna send over ten students and five faculty, so everybody was very happy that day. So that's just a few of the, the highlights. Oh, and there we are, I guess, just a few days ago at the Community College Association, that Mr. Greenhill put together, had a hand in, and there we all are. So that's just a few of my activities. I have to have pictures to remember what I did. Where was I? Are the people from Vietnam coming to spend some time, or just a brief visit? Are they taking classes? No, they're coming to do the two-year. Vietnam is trying to modernize itself, and Delnai Province has gotten a lot of money from the government, but Delnai University doesn't have enough spaces for them. And when they came over here a year ago, they were so impressed with us, they said, well, we know where we can send our students if Delnai University can't educate them. So, we said, we'll take your money. Where will they live? We're gonna let them handle all their living arrangements, but basically, they're going to live with other Vietnamese students and in, yeah, near Southeast Campus. And they'll all be on Southeast? No, they'll be- There's Dr. Kropole, I just realized, he's not here. He's in Baltimore. No, they won't be all on Southeast, most of them will be at Trinity River in the Allied Health Field. All right, um, thank you. Ms. Ayala is going to report on the Board Institute, Board of Trustees Institute in Santa Fe.
Yes. Okay, this is page one of forty-five slides, so just bear with us, I'll try to get through it before nine. I'm kidding. Just transformation, the words transformation, collaboration, partnership, joint effort, were part of the common theme of the Board of Institute that we attended. And basically, the purpose of the institute itself is just to allow board members, CEOs, presidents, provosts, and other delegates from community colleges to just convene and gain knowledge and share knowledge. This particular institute focused on the board's role in how we can work together to enable pathways to student success. I know we've talked a little bit about it, but just for those that aren't aware of it, the Texas Pathway Model is a framework for community college, colleges to just design and implement strategies so that we can increase the student, the student's success rates. So what that means for TCC is, you know, we're doing a very good job, as we saw with the group that came up that talked about the sign language programs that we have, we've heard other colleges, other campuses talk about the programs that they have as well. But what it means, though, is that if nothing changes, then nothing changes. And so, we must be clear, we must be strategic in our thinking and transformational in our thinking as we look at student success. And so that means to me that subtle challenges, subtle changes are not going to be, are not gonna show us or demonstrate some really transformational type improvement. So how do we do this? I, I will have to say that I was really pleased, and I was very proud to be there with Angela to represent TCC, because a lot of the things that we're doing here at TCC are things that are part of this pathways approach. And I think that a lot of the ideas that some of the other folks shared in some of the collaborations sessions that we had, we're doing here very well. But at the same time, until we're consistently seeing success rates, until we're seeing a hundred percent graduation rates, then we still have some work to do. So I just thought, you know, I'd share with you a couple of things that we talked about. The institute focused a lot on, on data, and making sure that we have accurate data to track what it is that we're doing. So we need to establish objective and measurable type milestones. We need to have technology, we need to have the infrastructure in place to be able to track the student's success, and to also track their progress. We also have to implement some best practices, and that's going to require collaboration, collaboration of the board, the chancellor, the executive leadership team, the students need to be involved in this, the community needs to be involved, the business community needs to be involved, the school districts, and, and, and the, the sign language group just talked, you know, very highly about this really strong collaboration that they have with this vendor, and that, with this, I think it was Sorenson. And so we're doing a really good job today on that, but there's always room for improvement. Also, we'll need to reframe our thinking in the way of, of teaching, in the way that we're approaching student development. I think we need to go in there, and we need to ask questions, we need to understand what the experiences that the students are going through, the issues that they're experiencing, and we need to also figure out what, what's the best way that they're learning, and, and, and figure out what's the best approach. So anytime we have an opportunity to integrate applied learning or internships where it's applicable, we need to look at those things. And, and that's where the collaboration with the board and with the community comes into So currently, there are four pathways project colleges in Texas, and I believe that TCC may be on the shortlist, I hope, for the next, for the next group. But one of my favorite parts of the V O T I provided us an opportunity to kind of reaffirm our commitment and our actions that we're going to do to move forward, to help the college really increase the student's success rate. And so when we, Angela and I worked with a lady from South, South Texas, who had, you know, it was really a nice collaboration, we had a lot of good discussions, and we talked about some of the things that we were gonna bring forward and bring back to our, bring back here to TCC that we'd like to do, to help establish expectations. And we'll have to work together with the leadership to make sure that we can set the right strategies in place. So some of these are, that we thought that we could probably do here, and that we should do here, is have a continued focus on completion measures through lowering the number of credit hours to degree. We're doing a really good job of that today, I think we can do a, a better job of that. So one of the ways we can do that, of course, is by implementing the, the, the tracking method, so that we know that whatever the students are taking, that's indeed what they need to be taking, and they're not graduating with ninety and ninety-five hours, okay? Then we also have competency-based credit for work experience, it's pretty self-explanatory. And then we also felt it's really important for us to implement tools to notify us when students are off schedule or are off their plan. So once a student comes in for advisement, they have a plan of action, we want to make sure that we're tracking that they're meeting the courses they need, and taking the courses they need to be taking. Secondly, I thought it was important that we engage our board members through attendance at Student Success Councils and Board Retreats, and that's already started. We have retreats as a board, and, and one of the things that I thought was really important is that we have not just an annual retreat, but bi-annual retreats with focus on pathways, and goals for the chancellor, and goals for the, for, for the board as well. So that, again, it's a spirit of collaboration. This is not a directive, it's for everybody to work together, and it's gonna take all of us. And finally, we're, I know we're in the process of updating the strategic plan and the plan to incorporate supporting our students through strong advising, and I think we, we're doing a good job of that, as I said, all throughout, a lot of these things we felt we were doing a good job, but again, there's always room for improvement until we can hit a hundred percent completion on our, on our graduation rates. So in closing, I think, you know, when I reported as to what we're doing, and some of the priorities that we at Tarrant County College were taking back, I, I said that in our fifty-year history, you know, its student success has always been top of mind for all of us. I think that's why all of us are here, 'cause we wanna make sure that we're, the students are succeeding. And so I think that, that everything that we do, and everything that we are, and everything that we offer is, is really demonstrative of that. And so I think as the students succeed, so goes our community, and I think that as we start working together as a board and working together on a retreat, that you'll have, that we're here committed to try to do whatever we can to make sure that the students are succeeding, because again, you know, we're here to help them, to give them a true pathway to student success, because as they become successful, they can provide for themselves, and they can provide for their families as well. So, thank you.
Any questions or comments? All right.
May I make one more kudo, just, just, just shortly, we, we did have the, the regional meeting of C C A T T, and the highlight of that meeting was our, was our, our workforce group led by Fred Schmidt, and, and it was just amazing. It was just amazing. Y'all stand up, I wanna give y'all, give kudos here. They just, they swept, they, they swept everybody off. I mean, it was just amazing, you were there, and they, the workforce panel that y'all led, I heard from all kinds of trustees how amazing it was, and the questions that they asked, and thank you, y'all do an amazing job, and you really, really impressed the group. Thank you.
Ms. Appleman, I also-
She's here. Stand up, Dr. Jennifer, and Dr. Jennifer Hawkins.
Oh, yeah, Dr. Jennifer, yeah.
Ms. Appleman, I also got some feedback from some of the attendees, that they thought that this was, they just really appreciated the fact that we had this here at Tarrant County College, and are looking forward to other types of events that they could attend as well, both from the business community and from the school districts as well.
It was a good crowd, and, and I think well-received, and a lot of interesting conversations. And yesterday, there was a Student Success, help me, Dr. Black, am I saying it right? Conference, and faculty was there reporting on their various initiatives on each campus, and that, that was interesting, too, and I have some printouts to share with you all. So we're all on the same page?
Right.
And moving in the same direction. If you were downtown this past weekend at the Downtown Main Street Arts Festival, you probably saw our wonderful booth and our gigantic bus, and I'm told by Ms. Catrow, I asked her, I said, how many people did you all talk to? Two thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine.
Wow.
And that was without Sunday where they were rained out, so, and they handed out a hundred and three, or they took in a hundred and three information requests, and we have email addresses for all of those people. So, great, great, great show, and thank you, and all those volunteers for being there Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. If there's a student in the room who happens to be on the collegiate staff, and is editor, and was recently named Student Journalist of the Year, would she please stand? Very, very cool, Jamel, and your time in Corpus Christi, my hometown, will be fun, I'll tell you where all the good shrimp places are. And the paper won twenty awards, is that, have I got that right?
I think so, yes.
That's awesome, we're really proud of you. Thank you for representing us so well. All right, Shelley, let's put this schedule up on the board. The next few months, if you think you've been busy, we have, here's the Student Learning and Success Council meeting that was yesterday, and of course, the Budget Workshop and Trustees meeting today. Tomorrow is the deadline for applications for the chancellor's position, so if you're thinking about it, you've got less than twenty-four hours to do anything about it. On the twenty-seventh, Dr. Kinslow will be in town, and will meet with the trustees, and we will review the entire stack of applications. On May the ninth, we will select the top applicant or applicants, we will conduct interviews out at the airport, and second only to finding the very best candidate is protecting the identity of the applicants, and so the interviews will be held out at the airport. Don't come out there and see if you know anybody. But we're gonna hide, and he says we need two days, I don't know if that's true. Then that night, we have a board meeting on the nineteenth. There will be what is being called a community forum on June the second, where the top candidate or candidates will be introduced and interviewed and viewed and sized up by probably selected groups over a period of time during the day, and you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and meet and greet. And then on June the ninth, we hope to name the finalist. And then you have that three-week waiting period, and we'll hopefully announce, and it'll, on the ninth, obviously, the name will become public, and then on the thirtieth, we would hope to sign a contract. So, kind of a scary but exciting time, and you've been very patient with us, many of you have submitted your comments and ideas about what you'd like to see and what you wouldn't like to see, and we appreciate that, those have been kept confidential, only the board has seen those, and Dr. Kinslow has seen them, we've shared them with him, so that he can continue to build his profile, and you saw the initial profile that was published. So, we are going to go, any questions or comments from anybody on this schedule? We are going to go into executive session, we do not anticipate any action on any items, so you all are free to go. Our next board meeting- Our next board meeting is, um, May nineteenth. I need to read this, deliberation on real property, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two of the Texas Government Code, deliberation on personnel matters, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four Texas Government Code, in consultation with attorney, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one. We are recessed.